Hey, everyone.
Hi, Claudia.
Can I please have a motion in a second to reconvene the public here?
Motion.
Second. Roll with favor.
Aye.
Can we please stand for the pledge of allegiance followed by a moment of silence for our service amendment?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can the district clerk please call the roll?
Marisol Mallon, president.
Present.
April Inatelli, vice president.
I'm president, but I just can't.
Jaclyn DiLorenzo, trustee. Sarah Parisi, trustee. Melissa Torregrosa, trustee. Joseph T. Centimore, superintendent of schools.
President.
Robert Hauser, assistant superintendent for business and operations.
President.
Reza Colifer, assistant superintendent for administration and personnel.
So.
Christina Poppy, assistant superintendent for curriculum and instruction.
President.
So these two worked.
For now, it's working, maybe.
Testing.
Hello?
Yep.
Thank you.
We're doing great, guys.
Welcome to summer. We're getting our act together. We'll be good. Can I please have a motion in a second to approve the minutes of the June 12th, July 1st, and July 15th meetings?
Motion. Second.
Does anybody have any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. I don't see anybody, but do we have ORBA or SEPTA or PTA council in the House? Okay. I will now open the floor for the first open public comment portion of the agenda. I will call individuals forward one at a time. Please wait for my acknowledgement before stepping up to the podium. Is anybody coming up to the podium? You should have received a number card from security on your way in. If you have not, please see a security guard in the back of the room. Any person wishing to address the board shall address the board president. Comments should be kept as brief as possible and relate to school matters only. Each person will be limited to three minutes for one or more topics. Individual employees, parents, or children should not be identified by name, title, position, grade, or building. The use of foul language and threatening comments will not be tolerated, and the board will consider a recess until order is restored. In accordance with policy 1230, public comment will not exceed 30 minutes. If there are additional persons wishing to speak, the board may consider a motion to extend the time. Number one. Just press the button on the right.
Okay. Can you hear me? Okay. Good evening. My name is Yvonne Gonzalez Guzman, and this is my husband, Armando Guzman. We have a daughter that recently graduated one of the middle schools this past June. We're here tonight to seek clarification regarding the district's policy on student supervision for school trips that return outside of regular school hours. Specifically, we would like to understand who is responsible for ensuring that students are safely picked up, whether it's a parent, guardian, family, friend. Is it the responsibility of the school chaperones, or is it the responsibility of the school security guard on duty? We raise this question tonight because on June 24th...
I'm gonna have to not allow you to share any of the details.
Okay. So, I will say this. My daughter was left alone after a school trip on school grounds, and it wasn't until I reached out to find out why she was left alone unsupervised. And I was told that the school security guard was told to watch any students that were left behind from this school trip. My daughter was not told that there was a security guard that was going to be present until she got picked up. And...
What are the... what are the... procedure?
I want to know what the district policy is. Are the school chaperones the ones responsible in making sure that the students get home safely, that they get picked up? Or is that the job of a security guard? And I ask that because I've been a teacher in a different district for 29 years, and in my experience, it is the chaperone's responsibility, not the security guard's responsibility, to supervise and make sure that the students safely get picked up from a school trip. And this is because a security guard is not typically familiar with the needs of a student, especially students who have IEPs and 504s. So, what happened to our daughter should never happen to any student in this district.
So, I will say, I'm sorry to you and your circumstance and what happened to your daughter. I can have the superintendent speak to our policy, and then if you leave your name and number with our district clerk, I can have the superintendent call you and discuss your current situation in further detail in private. Dr. Centimore?
I know.
So, I know we have spoken, and it's my pleasure to speak with you again about specifics, you know, after this meeting at another point in time. So, yeah, in terms of a field trip, it does depend on what time the field trip gets back. We generally do expect that the chaperones will stay and ensure that all the kids have been picked up. With this particular trip that day, you know, the return time was the same time of normal after-school activities. And, you know, at the secondary level, you know, when kids are getting out of clubs and athletics, you know, oftentimes they're waiting to get picked up, and we have, you know, security not there to supervise the children, but they're on grounds and, you know, to oversee, you know, the premises. And, you know, so we discuss the timing of it. But I appreciate, you know, your point, and I'm happy to sit down with you again. Certainly, if you'd like, you know, we could, you know, do so.
I understand. I know that you appreciate me sharing this. I just think that after a school trip, if there is going to be a security guard in charge, whatever students are left behind, they should be told that there is an adult supervising them, and whoever that adult is should be visible. You know, as we discussed, it was the hottest day of the school year, and if there was a security guard supervising, he or she was probably inside the school building because it was so hot. And...
Thank you. Thank you so much. The superintendent will give you a call and discuss further, but I appreciate you bringing the concerns to us.
Thank you.
Number two.
I just have to say, and I don't know anything, but I don't know what happened, but it is completely unacceptable for a child to be left unsupervised. I just have to put that out there. I don't know who's at fault for this, but no, we're here to watch, we're here to, you know, if we're gonna take children on a trip, bring them back to their parents, they can't be left unattended. I'm sorry, and I don't know what happened, but that's, this sounds, but what I'm hearing this is unacceptable. I just have to put that out there. Nobody should be left unsupervised at all.
Why can't she discuss? This is her child. If she wants to give the details, this is her child. She wants to give the details. Clearly, she's coming to this meeting to give us the details.
I understand, but it also involves school employees, and we don't discuss, so we can have a private conversation with the...
No, it doesn't involve. She was telling what happened. She spoke specifically about her daughter.
Correct.
Or son. I'm sorry. I don't know what it is, what the child is, but she should be allowed to discuss it without being told, because clearly, she feels it's up to us.
Right, and that's why we allowed her to discuss it. We gave her the rules, and now if we want to discuss it further, she can speak to the superintendent. Number two.
All right.
Good evening. I've been up here before. I've been working with Robert Hauser, superintendent's helped me, and some of the board members. I'm here about the low-income senior tax break that the district hasn't up their levels on in years. My goal right now, tonight, is to get as many people educated, because one of the things that amazed me, every person I started with knew nothing about this. Other districts, districts that touch both Seville, Hop Dog, have adopted the higher levels, and every single person I first spoke to knew nothing about it. So, I'm here tonight, and I understand, I spoke to Ann down at town hall, that we would have numbers in approximately the end of September. So, I plan on coming back in October. I have a case study with some of my own neighbors on their, I would call, poor people over 65 years old that are not getting any tax break that they deserve, like the rest of the districts, that the town and the county gives, and our district is failing there. And I'm trying, and once people, I think, see the information, I think that it'll lighten everybody up to what's going on, and I'm looking for help. I think it's the right thing for us to do, and I'm asking everybody to understand what this is. I have information. I'll sit down with anybody, and I'll educate everybody on it, and then you can let your own conscience be your guide. But we have the lowest-income people in our district and the eldest that are not getting a tax break that our neighboring districts are giving them, and I just think it's wrong. And I think it's because maybe we didn't understand it, or maybe we didn't, or, like I said, when I start this, everybody's like, looks at me, nobody understands it until I get all the facts out. I send the state forms, I send the town forms, and I'm very active in this. This is something I helped my neighbors try to apply for, and I was floored when they only got a break from the county and the town. I helped my father 22 years ago do this, and the level of this district is the same when I did my father's 22 years ago. It's just something, I'm looking for help. I'm hand in hat, and I'm looking for everybody at least put the time in to understand what it is. Okay? And then try to make a decision on it. And I appreciate the people that have helped me, sat down with me, and from board members to Mr. Hauser and superintendent, I appreciate your time, but we need to do something, and I want to get active with this in the fall, once we have the numbers, and I want to get this, at least that we can vote on it, because personally, I'm not gonna let this go. This is something that important.
Thank you, and I would appreciate any literature that you would have for us. I would gladly take.
So, this is my board discussion also.
Would you sit down with me? I'm sorry?
Would you sit down with me after the meeting?
I would absolutely love it.
Okay. And I have a book made up, and I can make books up for everybody.
Hundred percent. Thank you.
I would appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So, this is actually my board discussion tonight. I had the pleasure of sitting down with Steve. I...
Want to have your board discussion right now?
I figured if he's just talked, yeah. Oh. We've done that before. Do you prefer not to?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I just didn't know if you were gonna do it right now.
Yeah. I just want to say that I did misunderstand what we voted on last year, that I thought it was going to bring the number up to the current numbers that the town and federal government have. I did not realize until I sat with Steve that that's not what we voted on, and that it's a district thing, not a town or federal. So, I, 100%, I know that the tax assessor is doing, you know, getting information for us. Once that information is brought back to us, I 100% would like to vote on this. And as of right now, you know, I'm not seeing the data, but I see no reason why we shouldn't bring it up to what the town and state levels are of the 50,000 and anything 58/4 on the sliding scale. So, I do agree with that.
So, when this first came out, we did have a special meeting with the town assessor to try to explain it to us, because it was new to all of us. There was a lot of moving parts to it. They couldn't give us numbers on how many senior citizens it would affect in our district, how many, like, because somebody has paid for it, like, how much would the non-senior citizens have to pay when the seniors? So, we didn't have the numbers, so at that time, we just decided to keep it status quo, but I'd be 100% interested in learning more about it, for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can have the... Thank you again. Number three.
So, I'm a little bit dismayed by both of these public comments, because I also had an experience with a chaperoned trip a million years ago where I didn't know that the buses were back at school early, or than they were supposed to be, because I never got a call. So, chaperone trips are something to look into. I also didn't know about the taxes, because Mr. Hauser knows that I did ask about what the impact would be on people who don't get the tax break when people do get the tax break that you all agreed to. So, I didn't know that it was not up to a level that is actually helpful. I don't know if that's the right word. So, yeah. But what I wanted to comment about tonight is I know that the Internet-enabled devices policy is on the agenda tonight for approval, and it needs to be approved by, like, next week is the deadline. And I apologize if I misheard this at the CCHM board meeting, but there was conversation where there is funding tied to approval of the policy on time. And they mentioned a number, and I'm wondering if that's like a standard thing that you all, every district has to approve it by the deadline, or you lose funding. And if we are going to lose funding, if we don't approve this, what that number is?
Dr. Centimore?
Yes.
Yeah, I haven't heard that.
Yes. So, the state just recently let districts know money that would be available to help with the implementation. And so, I was gonna speak tonight, once the policy was adopted, to speak to the policy, which will go out, I'll send it out to the parents and guardians tomorrow, my letter with the policy. In terms of the financial piece, each district does have an allotment that's available, and it can cover a number of different categories, you know, if you're purchasing things to store the devices, which for the most part, we won't be. It's possible we might get something for our main office here or there, but not, you know, a wide array of things. But there's also, we just learned, the opportunity for training, for student training on the dangers of devices and safety, and we think that maybe that could tie into, you know, healthy decision-making, bully prevention. So, we are adopting the policy if the board so chooses tonight, which would put us in compliance with the August 1 deadline. We're required, like every other school district, to upload our policy, and there's also a little questionnaire about some of the things that you could apply the funding to. For our district, there's an available $28,000 and change, so we're gonna look to capture it, if possible. You know, we're gonna put in for it, and, you know, we'll ultimately see if we get approved, and we're gonna brainstorm on different things that are eligible, that we could potentially use that money for.
Thank you. Number four.
Okay. Good evening. The data finally came out about the travel bus that left the road and ejected the driver, the chaperone, and some students. Their report was very vague. They used defective tires. They did find tires underinflated, but defective also means tires that are aged and tires that are worn. But at any rate, what most enter, I know it wouldn't have happened in our district. Buses that go on travel go through our garage, and our people are very good. They would have checked for that. That wouldn't have happened here with defective tires. But did we ever decide on a policy when buses are, like, going out of state, that they use the seat belts?
I don't recall us having a decision to mandate, what I want to be careful here is, when we use a coach bus, which is what you're referring to, not a school bus.
Yeah, I'm referring to coach buses, not school buses.
Right. That the coach buses are actually equipped with seat belts. I would have to check on that. I'm just saying, you know...
There's a difference between sitting on the seat belt and using it.
Right. Yep. But I don't recall actually making a decision to mandate that students who are on the coach bus on a field trip must wear the seat belts.
The report did state that if these people were wearing a seat belt, they would not have been ejected from the bus, and that would have saved lives and injuries. I think this is something we should consider, that our students, when they travel on these coach buses, use the seat belt. They do in their private cars, I assume, with their parents. My children knew to put a seat belt on, or the car wouldn't roll, but that was me. That's a different story. Okay, so much for that. We'll look into that. Then the other thing is, I'm probably updating John, pool, is it still in attire floor, or did it get delivered?
It left Italy this morning.
I could, John, if you want to come up to the podium, so the people at home.
We did get confirmation that it left Italy this morning. It is in its second route, and we should be receiving, it should be in JFK Thursday evening around 10 o'clock.
Fancy schmance from Italy. I like it.
That's a wrap.
Okay. We're gonna have water by September.
I'm gonna get a second for you.
I'm gonna take delivery at the pool. I'm gonna be happy with that.
You're gonna update us.
And I'll give you an update.
John's gonna update us. Okay, so much for that. And the other thing is, any progress or lack of progress on our beautiful T-bird name? I mean, I don't think our T-bird ever offended anybody.
We do not have an update at this time on the mess.
You'll have an update?
We do not.
Not at the moment?
At the moment, we do not.
Okay, thank you. God bless you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Number five. Okay. Can I please have a motion in a second to approve the first reading of policy 0320, superintendent evaluation?
Motion. Second.
Any questions?
Yeah.
So, just question. So, who, with this policy, who actually evaluates him other than himself?
We do.
We do, right?
Yes.
Okay, that's it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Can I please have a motion in a second to approve the second reading of policy 5695, students and personal electronic devices?
Motion. Second.
Any questions? I don't have a question so much as I have a comment. I just want to make sure that parents and staff are aware of consequences for not following the policy. So, because it's not stated in the policy, so I just want to make sure that it is enumerated, and there are no discrepancies from building a building or teacher to teacher. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, Sarah, sorry. Go ahead.
So, my concern about this is...
My concern about this is, it, I, needs to be a little more specific, I think, and my concern is, it's not just emergencies. I think that, I'll give you just a, for instance, my major concern, one of them, is that I don't think the kids should be utilizing their devices in class, period. However, what if a kid is being bullied, let's say? And I know this firsthand, they were said, they were, the parents were told, the kid can go down to the office. Well, kid was down at the office five different times over a two-week period of time, not comfortable speaking in front of them, simply calling their parents, telling them what's going on. We no longer have payphones in the school, okay? So that if an issue comes up, the kid can't go during lunch and during between class and make an emergency phone call to their parents without having to go and discuss it in front of the very people they went and complained to, that they were being bullied and nothing was done. Okay? So, this is so vague to me, and I understand in certain aspects it has to be, but I just, I can't, I can't do this. You know, it's gotta be a little more specific with certain things, just kids that, health issues, I know that was put in there, but there are other issues as to this as well, exceptions to this rule. So, how do we do that?
Can I make a quick comment on that?
Absolutely. I was actually gonna ask our student.
As a student, obviously, I, you know, I'm a teenager. I like using my phone a lot. And as someone who, I've been bullied in the past, so I do understand, and I'm sympathetic to what she's saying. However, I will say, I know this isn't everybody's experience, but in my experience, Mr. Moran was very helpful in making sure that ended, and very understanding, and it wasn't like, oh, so now they're gonna have me and the guy that was harassing me sit down, and now they know that I ratted him out, or whatever. It was done discreetly, which I think the school handled it pretty well.
I think what Ms. Parisi is trying to say is, let's say you need to call your mom or your dad or a parent or friend, because you just can't take the bullying anymore that day, that moment, but to go into the office and to speak it not privately is what...
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Right.
That's a big concern.
I understand, yeah.
And it's actually not for us, but other schools.
So, we can do a roll call vote on this one?
Yeah.
So, Ms. Parisi?
Hold on. I just have a question to that effect, though. We have a wellness suite. We have, I don't think it's called YFS anymore. Yeah, it's Wellness. Well, that's all the same thing now? I'm still stuck in YFS. Is there not a way that we can find compromise here in the fact that, like, there is a, like a, I don't want to say like a safe phone, right? Like, if we're gonna have to do this, like, there has to then be somewhere that, like, yeah, maybe I don't want, you know, somebody just, like, breathing down my neck if I want to call my mom and cry about something, like, you know? I called my mom and cried about plenty of things in school and didn't, at the time, though, I had to do it in an office, and I understand what you're saying of, like, I mean, I still did it, but it wasn't exactly... mean, I still did it, but it wasn't exactly the most fun to have somebody right next to me. So like, my point being, if we have that and that exists, how do we make sure that every kid knows it exists and where to go? Because if somebody's never utilized the wellness suite before, this is the first time they're experiencing this type of situation, they might not even know what's in there and who's there to help them. So I think it's going to be important, if we have that already, to make sure that somewhere in this, we include where is the safe place to go, that somebody can use a phone in a little bit more private than the main office.
No, I definitely agree with you, and I also, the wellness suite is so opening. You know, they open their door to every single person, and you can have privacy, and that is a great suggestion. Definitely, 1,000%. The problem, though, that I see is that we need to adopt this policy, and even though it's a little vague, we still, as a district, can put that out to the children and let them know they have another avenue, no matter if it's on secondary level of guidance or other things. But I don't feel it has to be listed in the policy, and I wouldn't want to lose the funding because of just a couple of words missing from the policy personally. So.
I understand what you're saying about having that space in the wellness suite, which is absolutely fantastic. It is really a great spot for the kids to go. But I do believe, you know, having a high school myself, there are still kids that, there's a hesitancy to even going to an office. They still, there are still going to be those students that want that privacy, I mean, I'm going to be real, sneak into the bathroom, call mom, that they don't even want to enter that office. So that's a great compromise, but I'm concerned with what Sarah brought up, there's still those students, too, that may not want to go in there, and you don't want to leave those out, so I think that's, you know, I don't know, I mean, it's a little tough to say that would be the only thing, so I agree with what you're saying. You have those students that want to make that quick call, they're being bothered, and they don't want, they don't even want to enter another office. They just want to go privately, make that call, and that's it. And I don't want to forget about those students.
I'm not specifically talking at all about the high school, okay? I'm talking about the middle school and even the elementary level. There has to be a way that these kids can contact, and I'm talking very specifically about one thing. When a kid went to administration five separate times, they certainly don't want to have to go to administrat, when nothing essentially was done, go into administration and utilize one of their phones to call mom or dad, okay? We're looking for more problems with that, where the kids have no avenue. I have a concern with that. I also have a concern with, there's no really definitive, I don't think kids should be utilizing their phones during class time. And if they are, it should be three strikes, you're out type of baseball thing, okay? There's nothing definitive with that either, okay? So something has to be done. I don't think this covers it at all, this policy, just where I stand.
So I just want to say that if you read the policy, you can get an exception. Parents have that choice to get an exception. We are following New York State guidelines in this policy. We, like, this was what was pushed down to us. As for the consequences, it's part of our code of conduct, which Joe will speak, Dr. Sennett will speak about in a second, but it is part of our code of conduct, the consequences for this policy, and the policy is called out in the code of conduct to refer to. I will let Dr. Sennett more speak on that, but I just want you to know there are avenues for kids in the policy, that if you want an exception or anything like that, that you can get that.
From the, they're going to get the exception from the people that didn't handle the bullying to begin with? That's what I'm saying. It's, it needs to be distinctly more definitive. And I get, I get where you're coming from, April, I really do, but it's vague at best.
The exception is, if you feel your child needs that privacy, you can get a letter from your doctor, psychiatrist, psychologist, any of those type people, so that your kid then can have their phone. There's kids who medically might need their phone on them, that the state understands. So if you have a letter from a caregiver, oh, okay, so it is in the policy.
So this is, this is why I was asking for the consequences to be clearly laid out, because it's not in the policy, and I just want to make sure that everybody understands what the consequences are. As a parent with a student at the high school, I am not a fan of this policy, but it is not up to me to decide, because the state is the one requesting us to have this policy. So we are trying to understand it and interpret it as best as we can, given the guidelines. Dr. Sennett Moore was going to speak to this during his superintendent evaluation, but if you want to just add to it now?
Yeah, let me, let me.
Not the evaluation, we've already evaluated.
So I'm going to, in a moment, I'm going to read the letter that's going to go out to parents and guardians, and it does incorporate, particularly for, at the secondary level, the consequence component. But in terms of the concern about communication, in the policy, we did put in that the district is continuing to explore ways to improve parent contact during the school day, you know, beyond, you know, what we currently have in place, which will be the main office phone. We are hopeful, we know there are companies such as Parent Square that they, that are working on something that'll provide that direct parent-to-student communication, we're hearing that's in development. So we're certainly committed to continually to explore that avenue. In terms of safe spaces, you know, we'll certainly follow up with all the principles about this, that this does tie in with our ongoing Safe Schools Anti-Bullying Initiative, which is absolutely at the forefront. So let me read to you the letter that'll go to all parents and guardians tomorrow with regards to the policy. "I hope everyone is having an enjoyable summer. As part of New York State's budget process this past spring, a new mandate, Education Law 2803, was enacted to promote a more conducive learning and distraction-free environment in schools while reducing mental health and safety concerns often associated with the students' use of personal electronic devices. This law requires a bell-to-bell restriction on smartphones, smartwatches, tablets, and other student personal internet-enabled devices during the school day, including all classes, homerooms, lunch periods, recess, study halls, and passing time. To be in compliance, all schools had to develop and adopt the policy by August 1, this is August 1, 2025. In accordance with this law, ConnectQuot has adopted Policy Number 5695, entitled Students and Personal Electronic Devices. The policy will be available on the website for your review. At the elementary level, students are prohibited from bringing devices to school. Parents, guardians will be contacted if concerns arise. At the middle school and high school level, student devices must be silenced and stored in lockers or backpacks upon arrival at the school. The policy outlines exceptions for specific purposes. All students will continue to be provided with a school-assigned Chromebook for instructional use. At the middle schools and high school, lockers will be assigned, and student discipline for violation of this policy will be progressive, starting with an initial warning, followed by parental notification accompanied with a second warning. Further violation of the policy will result in detention that will increase progressively from one to three days with each subsequent infraction, leading to a parent guarding meeting. To be proactive and to assist students with their understanding of the policy, expectations will be reviewed with them at the start of the school year, and we certainly, in terms of our parents and guardians, we appreciate your assistance in this matter, as it will directly impact the success of the policy implementation. The district understands the importance of parents and guardians having the ability to communicate with your child during the school day. If you need to contact your child, you may call their school's main offices listed below. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact your child's principal or me. As always, your understanding and collaboration is greatly appreciated, and we are all very excited for the school year." I have a quick question. So I know there's no way of knowing until it, like, actually happens, but with what you said about how they could just contact the office, how do you anticipate that to, like, affect, I guess, kind of the operations of the school and essentially, especially, like, the main office? That is a great question. And so what we have been doing, working with our main offices throughout the district and our IT department, we're looking to add a telephone in each of the main offices, just in case that there's a volume, you know? And like I said previously, we're also continuing to explore other means of communication, and hopefully that'll avail itself. Excellent question.
Thank you, everyone. Any other comments or questions? So Ms. Prezi, how do you vote? Ms. DiLorenzo?
Yes.
Ms. Terabrosa?
Yes.
Ms. Annetelli?
Yes.
And I am a yes, motion carries. Can I please have a motion and a second to suspend the business meeting and convene the audit committee meeting?
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ms. Sanders, thank you for your time. Patience, you're up.
Has everyone had the chance to receive the audit presentation?
Yes.
Okay, every word on the page. I'm going to give you an overview of the process, and many of you have heard the process in past years. So the process is pretty much the same. I'm here to talk to you about what the plan for the audit's going to be, what we hope to accomplish during the audit, there's two phases of the audit, and talk to you about some new pronouncements that will impact what the audit report is going to look like. So the standards are still the same in place, so as you know, last year, you received at the conclusion of the fiscal year when I presented the reports and draft, a general purpose financial statement, an extra classroom activity fund financial statement, a management letter with some areas where we suggested that the district look at some of the internal controls and put additional procedures in place, okay? And then a communication to you, the board, to let you know that the financial statements were in accordance with the standards and that we had no difficulty in performing the audit. Those are the four products that you will again get when I come and present the reports and draft prior to the date that the reports get sent over to the State Education Department and the Office of the State Controller. Separately, the single audit will still be on the same schedule. It's a compliance audit with laws and regulations and grant document agreements, and so that will take place, that audit, during the fall and the winter of 2025. And then by the first quarter of 2026, we will go ahead and draft that report, and you will also receive it, and then that will go ahead and get filed with the Federal Audit Single Clearinghouse, okay? The standards to be applied are the same as last year, okay? I think the federal single audit will be a little bit different, because I think the education stabilization funding has dropped down significantly between the two years, okay? So that will change what we will audit, because we are required under the standards to rotate what we look at on an audit basis. To talk about some of the things that we do, and I'm on page now five, it all starts with the risk assessment of the internal control structure. And so you know that my role is really with respect to giving an opinion on the financial statements. We've rendered a modified opinion in the past, so that's the highest level of assurance that you get, that the financial statements fairly present in accordance with the standards. But how do we do that? We start with evaluating the internal control structure. We go ahead and we pull information from your internal auditor. There's a risk assessment that's performed for the school district. There was a payroll audit that was performed. We look at that information, we see how it actually interfaces with the financial statement audit. We look at the key internal controls. We sit with all of the individuals who are involved in those financial cycles, purchasing and accounts payable, cash receipts and billing, payroll, and we understand what they do. We make sure that the segregation of duties or that they're mitigating controls, so that there's a reduction in the level of something actually happening that's not correct from a transactional standpoint. Look at the board meetings, the board meeting minutes, so I've done that already. I know there's been some references to bids that have been awarded for the roof replacement projects, so we're going to audit that in the capital project fund, to the extent the work might have taken place. And looking to see if there's any kind of modifications to any agreements, that that support that the Board of Education is approving is in fact taking place from a transactional level. We're going to go ahead, then, once we have the internal control structure assessed, and we've already done a lot of this work, we've done a lot of payroll testing, new hire testing, termination testing, okay? Do people get paid what they should get paid on a sample basis? We've looked at the accounts payable and the cash disbursements. Is there a trail of transactions? Is there approval for a purchase order? Is someone going ahead and matching up with the purchase order with the invoice when it comes in? Is there the proper approval for payment? Is your internal claims auditor signing off on that whole packet of information? And is that in fact the check that's clearing the bank account, okay? So we've looked at a lot of these different areas in order to feel comfortable with the internal control structure and assess that it's a good internal control structure. So now that we've done that, when we come back in for the substantive part of the audit, that's when the books and records are closed, and we're actually looking at numbers that feed up into the financial statement, we're going to drill down into the account balances and the transactions. Do we have enough support for payroll, okay? There's 941s, there's information that we've audited with respect to what we've done during this early phase, for special education, for the grants that are received by the school district. Do we have documentation showing how much should have been received? Do we have documentation showing how much was spent? Do we have the final project reports that are filed by the state, with the state, once the funding and the cycle has finished for that particular grant? We're also going to look at, I'm on page six now, some of the other areas, capital project fund, as I mentioned before, there's quite a bit of activity, okay? Because you have the bond issue, you have the capital reserve, and you have inter-fund transfers into the capital project fund. So we're going to look at those discrete funding mechanisms, we're going to look at the spending against those discrete funding mechanisms, and make sure there's approval for those transactions also on a sample basis. There's a capital asset inventory report. We remember for the GASB 34 financial statement, we have all fixed assets that are captured net of depreciation. So we're going to look at that third-party reporting to make sure that that information is comprehensive, it includes all the additions, and anything that was declared obsolete by the Board of Education has been removed from that record. Long-term liabilities, this is also for the accrual basis GASB 34 financial statement. The district uses a number of actuaries in order to get this information. There's actuaries to capture the other post-employment benefits, the workers' compensation, because you're self-insured, that saves the district money. So the, and then the two retirement system, teachers' retirement system and the local employees' retirement system, will receive the actuarial valuations, make sure that they're correct, and that the assumptions are in accordance with the standards, and that it's reported on the financial statements. So that's some of the things that we do. We'll look at revenue recognition, make sure if there's any funds that are due to the district, there's a receivable, and there's a total revenue that's representative of what that might be. Reserve activity, we'll look at whatever the board has authorized for, with respect to funding, and if there's any expenditures that have been authorized during the year to come out of the reserve. We know that you use your reserves, you appropriate your reserves and fund balance in order to support the budget, and you have a fairly large size that you're appropriating. So we'll make sure that what's happening in the books and records is reflective of whatever the board has authorized. The timetable on page eight, when you get the opportunity, we were at the district, myself and my team, May 4th, okay? And that's when we did the internal control work, the assessment of risk, in order to determine that the internal control structure is a good internal control structure. We will come on board the week of August 11th, and that's when we do the substantive work. We're looking at the transactions, the account balances, and making sure that we have enough support for the numbers that are going to be in the financial statement. And then I will come in, I will present the draft reports to you probably in late September, early October, and then, as I mentioned, the federal single audit is due to the Federal Audit Single Clearinghouse by March of 2026. Were there any questions?
You're just awesome. Thank you, Ms. Sanders.
Thank you. I'll see you in a few months.
Yes. Can I please have a motion in a second to adjourn the audit committee meeting and reconvene the business meeting?
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can I please have a motion in a second to approve the financial matters, items one through six?
Motion. Second.
Any questions?
Yes, I have a few questions. Now that I'm, okay. I'm looking at this for, you know, the last few years, of course, since I've been on the board, and I'm just comparing from previous years, so forgive me if there's a logical reason, explanation for this, but I just have to ask. When I look at the Treasurers Report, the first one, number one, from May 2025, and I see the general fund over 77 million there, but when I go back to 2023, it was over 88 million, when I go back to 2024, it was 84, now it's 77, so why does it keep going down? I don't know if there's a logical explanation, but I'm just, just to compare, year by year, I'm seeing that number decrease, as well as the total is going down. I see there are fluctuations with the school lunch fund and all that, but why is the general fund keep going down every year?
So I don't have the, whoops, I don't have the Treasurers Report in front of me, but if you're referring to the general fund, the general fund bank account, in particular the Metropolitan Bank account that we have, is the conduit or the place that we deposit even the capital monies that go in there. So when we receive what's called a bond anticipation note, the funding on the main, let's say, $59 million bond. let's say, $59 million bond, it could be the timing of when those funds come in. If you're, if we're only looking at the May report, it could be the timing. Typically, those funds would come in the subsequent month, in June. But as we bring those funds in and we spend them on a capital project, you would normally see the balance go down over the time of a bond.
Okay, thank you. And I do have one other question, and I'm going to try to, it's embedded in another document. It's from number, oh, gosh, I want to say it's number five, appropriation status report, the general fund one, there it is, okay. And it's just something I noticed as I was skimming through here, page 10 of that.
And just so I know, because I'm going to bring it up, are you looking at the general fund?
Yeah, the general fund. And it just, it just stuck out to me. I noticed, and I don't know if you want, I'll give you the lines on page 10, 2110, 120, 21, 0020 instructional, I guess, 1 to 3 Sycamore. That has 43, over 43,000, everything else is zero that's available. Are we not spending on that? Why is that number stick out to me so much? Like, why is that? Like, everything else that looks like instructional, 1 to 3, Idle Hour, Cherokee, the whole deal, like, we've, it's like we've spent the money we need to on the instruction, we've done what we need to do. Why is that sticking out where it's 43,000 that's still available in Sycamore? What happened there?
So, we would have to look at the staffing assignments in grades one through three in Sycamore that occurred throughout the year. It, it's, that's usually, that 43,000 is what we would call an amount that hasn't been encumbered. So, it would be someone's salary that I'm going to say may have, someone may have been assigned to Sycamore, and then they were assigned to another building. I'm guessing, without having the specific detail. But that's usually what happens when there's an available amount, because, like you said, it should zero if all the staff who are assigned to that building, their salaries are 100% encumbered.
That's what I figured, and it just stuck out. I said, there's this one large number in there, so, you know, if there's a possible reason for it, I just wanted to.
I'll find out.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Can I please call for a motion and a second to approve the instructional and non-instructional personnel items as presented?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
I asked to have a.
For the personnel or the consent agenda?
Oh, okay, maybe I'm, maybe I'm missing this. Is this? Is this the one with this type?
If you want to pull from there, this is the topic.
Yeah. Oh, okay. So, which one is that? Is that?
38.
Oh, from which?
From.
It'll be on the top, the top heading? I know, it's so.
No, it's, no, this is instructional, this is. Teacher, this is a teacher.
So, instructional?
Yeah.
Number 38, you said?
Yes, and I had a question on 25. So, I just need 38 pulled for a separate vote?
So, 38, just so I'm sure I have the right one. Yes.
Beacon curriculum writing?
Curriculum writing?
Yeah.
Okay. And then, you have a question on 25, you said?
Yeah, could someone explain to me what AM supervisor is?
AM supervision.
AM, I'm sorry, AM supervision. What is that? Because it's specific to, yeah, what is that?
The high school has, allows the kids to get off the bus at about 6:45. Sometimes the bus gets in. So, the AM supervision are those teachers who are there earlier than their scheduled start time, and they do that.
Okay.
Okay, so I just want to make sure I do this right. So, we're pulling number 38 from the instructional.
Just for a separate vote?
Right, Reza, that's the instructional? Because this is hard, I mean, this is impossible to read. I really wish the font was large.
Yeah, this is nice and small, huh?
Yeah.
So, my glasses aren't working. Is this the beacon curriculum writing?
Yes.
Okay.
That's instructional, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so can I have a motion and a second to approve the non-instructional items as presented?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, yeah.
Can I have a motion and a second to approve the instructional items one through 37 and 39 through 85?
Motion.
Is that a 6? Oh, 65.
Still a motion.
Okay, we need to, Reza, we need to have this printed larger. Have a motion and a second to approve the instructional, one through 37 and 39 through 65.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Have a motion and a second to approve item number 38 from the instructional personnel items.
Motion.
Motion, second, second.
Come on.
Ms. Prazie, how do you vote?
Abstain.
Abstain. Ms. DiLorenzo?
Yes.
Ms. Terre Rosso?
Yes.
Ms. Iannatelli?
Yes.
IMES. Okay. My eyes are getting rough, Reza, with the clubs were on part of the.
For the record, minor as well. So, I'm sorry that it was so small. I'll make it bigger.
Thank you.
It's really small.
Can I call for a motion and a second to approve items one through 19 of the consent agenda?
Motion.
Second.
Ms. Prazie, you wanted to pull one? Or was that the one you wanted to pull? Oh, okay. So, anybody have any questions on the consent agenda items? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Superintendent's update, Dr. Centimore.
Well, thank you. Once again, I hope everyone's having a fun, safe, and enjoyable summer. Our summer ESY programs at the high school, Boston, and Sycamore are all going very well, as is the summer enrichment over at Slocum with the, with the Bosse's. Thank you to all of our staff involved with those programs. Sports physicals are beginning August 12th. Thank you to our nurses and athletic department. A number of teams have held summer workouts. Thank you to our coaches. In the coming days, the district is transitioning to a new website. We are targeting the evening of this Thursday, July 31st. Thank you to the staff, community, and board members who participated on the development committee, as well as syntax on our IT department. We are hoping the new site will be more user-friendly, especially while accessing it from a handheld device, with pertinent district and calendar information easier to locate. The summer is also a very busy time for our facilities department as they prepare for the start of school. We thank everyone in grounds, maintenance, and custodial for their hard work. At a subsequent board meeting, Mr. Allen will provide a more detailed update. Right now, though, I'm going to ask him to speak to a specific bond scope-related project as it relates to heat and potentially air conditioning at the high school. Mr. Allen?
Thank you very much. So, as the board and the community is aware, we've made a very substantial investment in our buildings in the form of air conditioning. We are in the process of air conditioning all of the buildings. The high school will be the one that comes online next. That one's going to be online, should be September. So, we're going to have all instructional spaces minus the new gym and weight room. So, those areas are going to be done. The next buildings to come online after that are going to be Slocum, that'll be coming up online during the middle of the year, and then Idle Hour and Pearl. Those were projects that were just awarded a couple of months ago. So, we're in the process of acquiring all the equipment we need, and then we have to upgrade the electrical service. But this time next year, I'll be able to report that the district will be well-air-conditioned and ahead of any kind of guidance and any kind of concerns relating to new policies at the state level. Any particular questions?
You said minus the gym?
Minus the gym.
I think there's an opportunity, Mr. Allen, with the existing bond scope that is, there's available funds.
There is.
If you could please speak to that so we can see.
Sure. So, we have, and when I say we, I'm going to include cabinet, the architect, myself, building administration, we've been looking at the project since day one. We've had the opportunity throughout the project to save a substantial amount of money without giving up any scope of work. So, we've been talking about it for the last couple of months, looking at how to utilize the remaining portion of those funds. One of the projects that was part of the initial scope of work was replacing the heating only in the new gymnasium and the weight room. Being a little proactive and knowing that we had the opportunity to, to look at expanding the project a little bit, I've asked the architect and a couple of mechanical contractors to investigate that. And we have the ability to now air condition as well in those spaces if the board so chooses. So, I have all the paperwork in place. We have state approval for the work, so it would be 100% adable. It's just a question of making sure everybody is in agreement and giving me the green light.
So, this is why I've been such an advocate for AC in the gym at the high school. They use it as a testing area.
100%.
So, if, if the test occurs on a hot day, that's miserable for those students in that gym without an air conditioning to take that test.
Without a doubt.
So, that's, I've always, you know, I've always asked for AC in those gyms at the high.
Agreed. And when we did the 2022 committee, bond committee, you know, it was a topic that was discussed, you know, quite extensively. The problem is, when you are trying to project costs years in advance, there's no guarantees as to how far you're going to be able to make your money spread. So, it was always a topic of conversation. We wrote the narrative for the community and everything else to allow for expanding air conditioning district-wide. So, there are further conversations that we can have in the coming months, but right now, we do have the ability to address that. And it is somewhat time-sensitive because the heat was always a part of the scope of work. We do have to do something to address the heat, even for the upcoming winter. So, you know, to, to be able to package this together, do a little combo meal, as, as Dr. Centimore likes to say, this, this is the opportune time. Instead of doing just the heat and then coming back a year, two years later, and actually paying a premium to do the air condition, we can put it all together in, in a nice package.
Thank you.
So, does that mean yes?
I mean, I'm a yes.
We don't, we don't need, and I.
You don't need a formal vote, but you just need kind of a green light?
We don't need you any.
No, well, you know.
No, and I do it. Because of the amount of money, because of the amount of money we're discussing here and the scope of work, and because it's a very visible and public location, I think it's in everybody's best interest to know the scope of work, how we're using the monies that we've been given. And I do like that, that little peace of mind, knowing that everybody's.
Yeah, because the bond is coming in about $6 million under, you know, and, and we're able to.
Correct.
Reallocate, I'll do that too, John, thank you. We're able to reallocate about $400,000 to incorporate the AC into these spaces that you're about to address the heat, so the opportunity is golden. And then, with the remaining 5.6 potential million, we could explore other eligible areas, other AC expansion, other larger projects that you'll bring more detail to us in the, in the future. But right now, you need a green light for AC and the, and the new gym.
I would love.
And the, and the weight room area.
Thank you.
I'm agreeing.
Same.
Thank you so much.
Can that be from Italy, too?
Only if I get to go over and bring it back personally.
Chaperone.
Dr. Centimore, was that all?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Board of Ed committee reports, we had a policy committee, Ms. Iannatelli, Ms. Terre Rosso, is there anything else?
We spoke about the evaluation policy that we voted on today. All we did was, the board came up with self-assessment questions last year, so we just added it to the existing policy that was already there for the evaluation of the superintendent. And we went over the attendance policy. Melissa, you have anything else to add?
That covers it.
Thank you. Board of Ed topics, we have English 12 honors beacon, Suffolk beacon, Ms. Iannatelli?
So, at the end of last year, Ms. Poppy told the community about the new program that we are partnering with Suffolk community on one of the English programs being a college course. So, you get college credits as a 12th grader taking this course. I misunderstood, and I thought it was going to be a separate course for, for college, you know, 12 classroom. I recently found out that honors, 12 honors is the equivalent to this college class. So, I feel the community does not know this, and I wanted you to speak more on that because I want them to know that if your kid is taking 12 honors, and I would like a parent's career, so I'm going to go out about this, because if they have the opportunity then to get the college credits for that class, so they do not have to take it in college, hopefully they transfer. And I want every parent who takes, again, 12 honors to comprehend, or any parent who thought they were signing up for this college course to know that it's 12 honors, because for me, it was that way. I wanted my kid in that course, and I didn't know it was going to be 12 honors, so.
So, just before you start, Ms. Poppy, I'm sorry to interrupt. Is that, is this new for this year? Okay. Take it away.
Yes, it is new for this year for this particular course. And I think maybe some of the confusion comes from the approval process. So, what we do behind the scenes is we present our coursework in the form of the syllabus to, in this case, Suffolk County Community College, and then the college makes the determination whether the coursework matches their coursework in kind. In particular, English 12 honors was submitted for consideration by Suffolk, along with the teachers credentialing for that particular course. It was accepted, but if a child is enrolled in the course in the fall and into next school year, they have the option of purchasing those college credits so long as they're successful in the course, right? And so, it's not necessarily a requirement. If a child enrolled in English 12 honors, they can take the course for itself, English 12 honors, or they can take the course for college credit and still be enrolled in that same course of study. I have good news, and, and actually, we're still receiving approvals from Suffolk County Community College, the beacon program. Up until last week, they were still rolling in. So, I will be presenting the board with a list of newly approved courses for college credit. We'll have 13 in all, including this English course, which we knew about, about in the springtime last year, mid-year, we were still in the application process. So, between Suffolk County Community College and Farmingdale State College, we have a number of new and exciting opportunities for students to earn college credit in the courses that they've already enrolled in. We will be communicating this to parents, certainly at open house, but certainly our directors will go above and beyond in terms of ensuring that our families know about the opportunities for these particular courses.
I love it. Thank you so much. This is great opportunities for the kids because they already were going to be taking these courses anyway, and to have the opportunity, if they want, to take the college credits is just amazing. I love it. Thank you so much.
I have two quick questions, if you don't mind. Firstly, when you say 13, is that in addition to the current dual enrollment classes?
Yes, yes, it's in addition to what we already have on tap. So, currently, we're offering 28, and that's including that English 12 course, the beacon course, and an additional 13 on top of it. So, we're, we've made some strides, made some strides in areas where we haven't been able to offer dual enrollment at all, specifically in art and music. So, we're particularly enthused about those opportunities for students next year.
And the second question, does this, is this going to, I guess, kind of alter the course at all? Like, is it going to become more rigorous, or is it the same course, just now you get college credit for it?
It's essentially going to be the same course. We have engaged in some curriculum writing because there is a requirement for us to be able to essentially match our syllabus to what the college or university provides. to what the college or university provides. Uh but in sum and substance of what has been presented in the coursework, they they're equal, right? So the student feel, I would say, is going to remain the same feel uh with that overtone of, you know, you may take this course for college credit this year.
You're welcome.
I love this so much. As you know, two of my kids have graduated and taken a ton of college credits with them. I'm just sad that this is this year, not last year, because my daughter was in the 12 honors. But it's all good. I love this. I love this for our students. Thank you. Uh there are several of us that want to speak on the next topic. We have the heat policy. So whoever wants to start?
I guess I I could start. Um yeah, because we had adopted the heat policy, and I I was wondering if if John could speak to the wording that we had um where we said they may, I can't remember exactly what it was, the exact wording was, but or may take action versus must take action, I believe. And it was my understanding that when we chose that, it was, you know, we had, I think, asked about security things. That was a while ago, just to make sure everything was secure. So I, if you could speak to that as far as that, because it was requested by the CTA president that we make these changes, and um and maybe you could just explain how, you know, about that from your your knowledge.
Sure. So yes, the the state came up with recommendations for a little bit more lenient of a policy. Um not every district is positioned as well as we are with air conditioning and the future of it. So we have a little bit of a unique situation here in the district. When they start talking about elements that may require activation, so when temperatures get to 82 degrees, districts may take action, including opening windows, including turning off lights, moving people away from windows. I mean, they're they're kind of searching for answers to try to mitigate the temperatures. They're really, it's, you know, opening a door, we we identify that as a concern, as a bullet point at the state level, because we don't prescribe to that as far as a viable alternative. While I understand the need for having flexibility, um you know, what we're talking about today is is a policy that's going to impact people, you know, moving forward. We are very well positioned. So if we want to go with a strong with stronger language, we we have the ability to do that. There is no concerns from a facility perspective if we have it more more rigid for ourselves, because we're in a position where we can afford to be so.
I think what I needed help understanding and more clarity on, I guess, is the word must and may, right? So at what point must the district take action? Because the heat advisory was put in place so that if the temperature did come to a certain degree, districts had to. I thought that that was the purpose of the policy, had to or must take action.
Yeah, and it is. I mean, the the two, the two different temperatures that are talked about are at 82 degrees, you may take action. At 88 degrees, you must vacate premises. So those are the two guiding forces, the guiding temperatures in this whole entire conversation. I can tell you from a firsthand experience, it wouldn't matter whether or not we were air conditioning every space. When we start getting over 78 degrees, we're acting. We're already proactively doing this. We didn't need the state to come up with a policy to give us an idea that we need to be respectful of the occupants in those spaces at all. And I and the community agreed. We're doing a district-wide air conditioning program, which is which is ahead of almost every other district. So, you know, when when we start talking about may, must, shall, will, I mean, I'm I'm not concerned by whatever language is is decided upon, because we are well positioned, and it's already been our practice to be proactive before those temperatures and those thresholds are met.
And and I do appreciate that. I I think the concern is you're proactive, which is great. But if you're not here and somebody reads that policy, and they don't feel like they need to take action because they may take action, do you know, do you know what I'm saying? Like?
I do.
I'm just trying to understand the word of the policy as it relates to New York State requirement.
Yeah. And, you know, with the guidance that we got in policy committee was the policy that you're looking at, that had a little bit of a little bit more latitude in it. Um if it's if it's something that the board chooses to go stronger, I'm telling you right here, right now, this is not just me. This is, this is something, you know, this is ingrained in the culture of plant facilities at this point. It's not gonna change.
So what I'll say is if the board is okay, it's a minor change to use must instead of may, I am more than happy with bringing it to the policy committee, making the change and bringing it back, if everybody's on board with bringing it to the policy committee again.
I'm I'm fine with it. I think, because I I looked up the actual legislation. We are required to take action to relieve the heat-related discomfort. So I think it's just a function of changing it to say that we must take action. That may include opening the windows. Like, I think it's actually the use of both is what we need to do. I'm fine with going back and looking at.
Right. And I think that that was where I was getting confused in the policy. Like, I thought we had to take action, and this is what we could do for that action.
And and in essence, I I interpret it the same way, the the same way that you do. Uh I mean, the the one bullet point, as I pointed out, was the opening of doors. I I don't think if we get to that point where we feel that we need to open doors, I think we're having bigger conversations at that point, because we're not going to jeopardize the security in 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 lieu of a couple degrees temperature. That's just not gonna happen.
Now, if this were to be brought uh to the policy committee, there's, the legal has to review it. There's fees attached. And I personally, what I feel as far as that is, if we're gonna do what we need to do regardless of the language, I don't think it's necessary to make that change and and spend that time and money for for one little word. If we're gonna do, like you said, we've been doing it. We will continue to do that and do what we need to do. So we're ready ahead of the, you know, ahead of it. Um so I wouldn't be for that, but that's just me.
I appreciate your concern with that. Um but being on the policy committee, as you know, this change would take us maybe five minutes of conversation because we've already had it here, and to re just do that sentence and bring it back to us. So if three of, like, I'm okay with it. If three of you are okay with it, we'll just bring it to the policy again.
Melissa said yes.
Yeah.
I mean, I I'm okay with it as, because I want it to match what is on, right. So I I would like to, I would like it to match the current state standard. So I'm okay with it going back to the policy committee.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Um I actually had a board topic that I wanted to bring up. Uh I wanted to, I wanted to bring to the board um for consideration, a board retreat. So we're fairly new members, all of us, and I think it would benefit us to have a retreat, to have somebody come in and try to just get us to be a little bit more cohesive, maybe some rules that might have changed throughout the years. I just wanted to see how the board thought about doing a retreat.
Um do you do you elaborate like what you mean by retreat?
So you would not be included in that, I'm sorry. But somebody would would come in, and the board and the superintendent would sit, and we would discuss um just rules and regulations and goals and stuff like that.
I was really confused when I read that, because I thought that you guys were all gonna like fly to Hawaii or something.
If we fly to Hawaii, you have to come with us. If we're flying to Hawaii, I'm in for sure. I already checked with your parents. They said you could come.
I am definitely on board. I would like to see us do what we can to work as well as we can together.
Yeah, it's fine.
All right. Um Ms. Kyler, if you could uh get me some, I'll get you with the name of somebody to do a board retreat, and you can look into dates and prices. Thank you. Does anybody else have any board of ed topics? Okay. Does anybody in the public want to speak? Can I please have a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting?
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.